Welcome to the January 25, 5:30 PM City Council Presentations Meeting. And welcome back to the council chambers. Yay. Thank you. Thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much. City Manager, special recognitions.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Our first agenda item tonight is the city's Employee of the Month. And our first recognition will be Officer Matthew Gonzalez, who is on shift or coming off shift. The Chief Lau will introduce and accept Matthew Gonzalez's award on his behalf.
Thank you, sir. Hello, Chief. How are you? I'm good, sir. Good to see you. Great seeing you guys. And it's actually my pleasure to tell you what an amazing officer Matt Gonzalez is. He was patrolling downtown and noticed a couple folks in a park after hours. Turns out it was a mother and her three children, three, five, and seven years of age. Apparently, they had run out of money and were put out of the hotel they were staying in. So immediately, Officer Gonzalez took it upon himself, went, got them food, and fed the four of them, and we did an emergency... Time's up, sir. You're not going to ask me to dance, are you? Okay, continue. I'm sorry. So, anyway, we did an emergency Department of Children and Family call out. And while they were coming out, the hat was passed around, and we were able to, the squad was able to get enough money to put them back up for a couple days to bridge the gap until another check. But even more so, he's followed up with Department of Children and Families, and they are providing services to this mom and been following up on it. But it's just one of the many things that our amazing staff does, and I wish he could be here to receive the honor, but he is out, fighting crime. Well, thank you very much, and congratulations. Awesome man. Outstanding. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And next, from our Community Relations Department, staff would like to recognize Shane Daly, Will Petty, and Curtis Corman. And Jim, come on out of the booth there and bring it home.
Good evening, Council, City Manager. I'm Jim Thomas, Community Relations, and I'm here today about the three employees that he just announced. Thank you. And what I'd like to say is, as a result of the remodeling, the makeover of the elevator, of course, we all know we had to go across the street to broadcast. Traditionally, that involved one single shot with a camera. It wasn't very pretty, and we couldn't broadcast it live. So that night or the next morning, they'd have to come over here and upload it, and then we could broadcast it. And that's not what people have been used to for about 20 years. In fact, we were the first people in the county to broadcast live council meetings. I don't know if you knew that. We were the first one in the state to broadcast over AT&amp;T, so got a track record that I wanted them to live up to. Besides that, on my performance review, it says that when it comes to meetings, that we live broadcast all meetings with a benchmark of 100%. So if we went without a month without broadcasting, I'd be at 92%. And it was all about me, ninety percent.
That ain't happening.
But at any rate, so I had that conversation with them, and they said, okay, we gotta go. What? We're gonna be across the street. So they went over for about a week. They wouldn't answer my phone, my texts. And they got over there at the fire department and figured it out. And in the very end, they had it right down to where they could broadcast from over there, but one person would have to sit here all night, and the other one would sit over there. And eventually, one of them remembered a piece of software. It was free software that he had used, so he got with the ID department, and they loaded it over there, and was able to broadcast the entire meeting, which is quite an accomplishment. We've never done that from over there before. And they used various equipment, our studio equipment, some of our field equipment, microphones. I think I bought them back in 2007 as a backup to the microphones we had then. So it was just a mishmash of equipment and a few purchases on the side. They've had it up and rolling, and it was almost flawless the entire time. So I was really proud of that, and I thought that they should be recognized for the great work they did, and they worked well as a team. That was the important part.
So Mayor, as we get the three gentlemen assembled, I also like to remind Council, this team here is the ones that put our Titusville Talking Points together, as well as the video every quarter. And I think that it's the envy of most of the cities. They're all trying to figure out how to do it because they think we outsource it and are paying a bunch of money to do it. But it's these four fellows that actually put that together every quarter, so congratulations, team.
Will?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Curtis?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Amy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is from our Water Resources Department. We'd like to recognize Maureen Phillips, and Mr. Sean Stoffer will come forward to do the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sean Stoffer. I'm the Water Resources Director. Tonight, we are here to recognize Maureen Phillips as the December Employee of the Month. Her job involves creating all types of outreach materials, and she does an outstanding job finding new venues and ways to get out our conservation message. This past summer, Water Resources sponsored the City Awards Picnic. And you may remember the box of Cracker Jacks that everyone received as your invitation, and that was Maureen's idea. It was a way to have those specific invitations for each employee, and you notice her name was on there. And she labeled each one of those 531 boxes and organized it and delivered it to make it a personal invitation to each of our employees for the awards ceremony. So we wanted to make it special for them because we had missed the previous year. One of the other things that I just wanted to add, that when she contacted Publix to purchase those boxes and told them what it was for, she ultimately got ahold of Frito-Lay, and they donated those to the city. So that was all free because they found out what it was for. So that and all the extra things that she does, as well as put together a lot of beautiful presentations for me to present throughout the years, just want to thank her for her time, her efforts, and being available at a moment's notice. And Maureen, if you'd come up. Thank you.
And last is from the City Clerk's office, and Jolynn's gonna come down. We'd like to recognize Patsy Johansson and Lisa Mertland. Jolynn?
Good evening, Council. I'm the Assistant City Clerk, Jay Donhoff. And tonight, we want to recognize two of the city clerk's employees back here, their office assistants, Patsy Johansson and Lisa Mertland. These two ladies sit at the front desk of City Hall. Many of you see them right up there. They're right up at the front desk. And they perform some very important work for the city in two large ways. They work with public records. You know, that's a really big deal in government. And they are constructors, and they do all the geeky details that are helping us build this electronic records database that has more than either 10 or 14 million images, and they are growing. And we do this work for all of departments that entrust us with our records, and that is a proportionate, large thing that they do, and that is just really important to government. I try not to embarrass them too much. And then the second thing, these ladies are, just in first impression to callers and visitors, they are the most service-hearted, nice, fast, and efficient individuals because they get all kinds of crazy telephone calls, or the mundane and normal telephone calls, but they're organized, and they have information available at their fingertips at all times to try to get that public to wherever they're going, because sometimes it's not even at the city. So for this reason, we want to, the city clerk wants to recognize Patsy Johansson and Lisa Mertland. Please come on up.
Patsy? Patsy? City Manager, if you spin me wrong, no one didn't know that. I trusted you. Not Patsy. And Red Lake. Next item, we're on Item 4B, which is the City's Basin Management Action Plan Update. We provide this update to Council annually, and presenting is our Stormwater Manager and Deputy Public Works Manager, Sandy Reller. Sandy?
I'm gonna get myself comfortable up here because you're gonna get sick of hearing from me by the end of the night. So this presentation should show up in a second. This is on our Basin Management Action Plan, specifically the stormwater portion. You've seen a lot of these slides before, so I'll kind of go through these first ones rather quickly, since we have a packed agenda tonight. So you're all familiar with what a Basin Management Action Plan is, or a BMAP. It's the blueprint for restoring the impaired body of water. And this impaired body of water is the Indian River Lagoon. The BMAP requires the city to reduce its loadings to the Indian River Lagoon over a certain period of time. Most important thing, I think, about the BMAP that you need to understand is it's an ever-changing document. They didn't just make this five years ago, six years ago now, seven, actually, and say, this is gonna fix the lagoon. We all don't have the button that's gonna fix the lagoon. If we did, it'd be done by now. So they're constantly reworking it. They're using the best science they have at the time, and they give us different credits for different projects as new technologies come along. They'll give a, you know, and they monitor them and see, this one works better than this one. They'll change the amount of credits we get. So it's an ever-changing document, and that's our current required reductions, but that could change next year. If they say, hey, this isn't working, we're gonna ask you to reduce more. Or, A, you know, we need you to act, we have a better modeling, we're gonna reduce less, which probably won't happen. There are many different types of loadings. To the, to, flutin' loadings to the lagoon. There's base flow, there's stormwater, there's muck flux. Public Works, we're responsible for treating the stormwater portion of flutins that go to the Indian. So a large portion of this city was developed well before there were any stormwater regulations. So we are required to go in and retrofit some of these areas to help treat some of that stormwater before it gets to the lagoon, to reduce the nitrogen and phosphorus that ends up in the lagoon. Since the BMAP has been in compliance, these are all the stormwater projects that we have done to reduce the nutrients to the lagoon. Since I was last here, I think it was March, we've completed those four projects highlighted in yellow. And over on the right side, we have started three more, the process of three more baffle boxes. So we're moving right along. These charts, if I can get this thing to work. These charts, so the top chart shows where the BMAP requires us to be. The bottom chart shows where we are with our current in-progress, completed, and planned projects. So what that shows is we're well above where we need to be by the required time in the BMAP. But that's not a reason to stop. We all know the lagoon is not where it needs to be. We need to continue to do as many projects as we can to reduce the amount of nutrients to the lagoon to try to get it back to where it needs to be as fast as we can. So this is a map that shows where all the project locations are within the city. It shows the basins that have been treated using these projects. The thing I wanted to show here is, and with this, with all these projects we've done, we've done all the, as you say, low-hanging fruit. I've done all the easy stuff. I don't, I've put a baffle box wherever I can think of a baffle box is gonna fit, and it's gonna do some good. I've put BMATs in all of our city-owned ponds. So we're moving forward. These projects are gonna start becoming more expensive. We're going, it's going to cost more to get the same amount of nutrient removal than it did in the past. So our recommendation moving forward, this will be on your agenda, on your 6:30 meeting, consent agenda, is to move forward with a CAP master plan with a consultant. The primary, they, the goal is to, you know, address flood control, flood plain management, water quality improvement, sustainability, and resiliency of our stormwater assets. The proposed scope includes Phase 1, which is what this work order that you will look at on your 6:30 meeting includes an entire stormwater inventory and basin characterization, looking at what's there, what projects we've done, and then looking at a water quality assessment and improvement project program. So they'll look at what we've done, they'll look at where the model, the nutrients that are going, and they're going to come up with a CAP plan that we can use moving forward. We want to make sure that we're spending our money wisely. We're putting, we're putting the right water quality projects in the right place to get the most benefit to the lagoon. So, and then after Phase 1, we're hoping maybe next year, we can come back with Phase 2, that will take that same base information and help us with some flooding projects and sea level rise projects. So the project includes an inventory of what we have, like I said. And the primary outcome will be this capital improvement project plan that we can use and pull from. So, you know, when we're going to look for grants, I can have already a list of, these are the ones I want, and we can prioritize those, which ones will help the lagoon the most. The timeline for this Phase 1 is 50 weeks from the notice to proceed, and the cost is about $192,000 for this Phase 1. Any questions?
A couple things. One is, and I just think for everybody, especially those who are maybe watching on TV, who, like when I came here six years ago, I never heard of a baffle box. So I had to learn a lot about, I've learned a lot about a lot of stuff, but baffle box being one of them. So can you basically say what a baffle box does?
So baffle box is something we use quite often because the city is so developed and was developed before any of the stormwater management requirements were in place. So we have to find a place to put something in a very small area, because we don't have land for giant ponds or things like that. So a baffle box is a box that usually goes within a pipe. We try to get it as close to the lagoon as we can. As the water goes through, it, when it rains and the water goes through, it catches as many plants, leaves, mulch, trash as it can. And we also have now put in what they call BAM. It's a bioabsorbent material that has the water, mostly as the base flow goes through, it'll absorb some of the nitrogen and phosphorus, and that stuff actually is pretty good. It's good for about 10 years, so as it's going through, it absorbs it before it gets to the lagoon. So then we, our stormwater crew goes out at least monthly to all these baffle boxes, and they take their big vacuum truck and suck all that stuff out. So all that nutrients that was in those leaves, was in that mulch, doesn't end up in the lagoon. We take it to the landfill. So even if, even without the bioactive material, those things do a very good job at keeping that stuff out of the lagoon. Now, it doesn't keep 100%. It still has to bypass because that would flood, but it does very, anything that's in there would have ended up in the lagoon.
I was able to take a field trip and observe that. It's pretty impressive. So in the end, and I think we discussed, baffle box is really kind of like a pool filter. It filters things out that shouldn't be there and lets water go that should be there. How many do we have?
Um, oh. Think for...
Ever-changing number.
Hey, I can look at my presentation. We're up to, I think, like nine, but I just added like three more. So we have a, we have a whole lot.
So I think we have nine, as you told me. How many do we have in the plans?
We have, we just finished THS. I don't think I included that in your nine, and then I've got three more in design right now.
And how much do those baffle boxes cost?
About, these ones are costing about $350,000.
Wow, that's an expensive pool filter. It's well worth it. It really is, from what I saw.
It usually comes with some pipe upgrades and things like that, too.
It looks very valuable to the efforts. I appreciate your effort. You're actually the one that took me on the tour, and I got to see the truck come in and clean it out. And again, that was, I didn't really know exactly what a baffle box did, so I appreciate that. Member Nelson?
Sandy, when I look at the map on page 6, or slide 6, where does that blue line end? Where we're doing projects?
We are. No, we're still, that's part of the help that I need. I don't have land down there in those southern basins to just throw a baffle box in, or I don't have any ponds to put the BMATs in, so I need, I need someone to help me figure out, hey, if you put one here, and it might come with having to purchase property. Depends on where we, but I've looked at those basins for probably the last two and a half to three years. I want to put something down there. I just don't know what to do yet.
Where, how far down in the city are we going right now?
So if you look at the map, all those different colors, those are, those are the city basins. The blue with the lines are all the ones I have projects in. So we would, we want, we want stuff in every one of those.
Where does that end? Is it like Highway 50?
No, that's past Highway 50. That's down where the city, that's down to Nassau Causeway.
Okay. Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Great presentation, Sandy, but you said something in the beginning that struck my ears, and I need for you to explain what impaired body of water is.
So the DEP goes and they, they took all the water bodies in Florida, and they, and they test them for all sorts of different pollution problems. And this, and they'll put them on a impaired body list, so that's where it starts. So this, the Indian River Lagoon is impaired for nutrients. It means there is too much nitrogen and phosphorus in that lagoon for it to maintain a healthy system. So once it gets put on that impaired body list, then they have to develop a TMDL, which is a total maximum daily load. They said that they do a bunch of modeling, they do, they take the best science they have and say, if we were only putting this maximum amount of nutrients into this river or into the lagoon, it would, it would function properly. So once that TMDL is developed, that's when they develop this BMAP and say, every stakeholder within this old Indian River Lagoon basin, it's not just us, it's a lot of counties, has to reduce this amount to get us to that maximum load, the maximum load, get us down to that maximum load. And if we can get there, the science says that hopefully we will have, we will stop getting the algae blooms, and the seagrass can start growing. And that's, that's our end goal, is to get, is to get less algae blooms so the seagrass can start growing. And that is our, how we know the lagoon is getting better.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Any other questions from Council?
And Mayor, I'd like to add just a quick, off of our website, you'll find the GIS button, and then go to Story Maps, and then go to Lagoon, what we're doing to the lagoon, and you'll find these projects that are listed and what our ultimate goals are with the lagoon.
And I'd actually, yeah, and I'd recommend going to the County Saver Lagoon website for the same reason. They show you, because the lagoon doesn't know where the Titusville city limits are, unfortunately. So it shows everything that the county's doing, the other cities within the county that have gotten funds from the Soral Project, and I was looking at it yesterday. It's a really good product that they put out, too.
Member Nelson?
One loaded question. What do you think about, how long is it going to take us to get there?
I wish I had that answer, and I wish it was tomorrow, but...
I wish it was tomorrow.
I wish it was tomorrow. If we knew the button to push to be tomorrow, we would make that happen. The current BMAP has it 15 years. They did push it out a couple years because, you know, they haven't seen the progress they wanted to, so hopefully, you know, hopefully we can start seeing some improvements.
I was hoping you had the crystal ball.
Yeah, I was hoping so, too. Thanks.
That's a tough one. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. City Manager?
Yes, sir, and Council, the next is Item 4C, which is our, Kimberly Horn and Associates will be providing a presentation relating to bicycling improvements within the city. Sorry, I'm sorry, I don't have your name, but...
Mike Woodward?
There you go.
I'm a transportation engineer with Kimberly Horn. This is on, good. So thank you. Glad to be here. Glad to talk about these projects. So I was last here in 2019 to go through the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan that we developed for the city, and that included several different types of bicycle and pedestrian improvements. So... Thank you. 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 improvements throughout. A lot of them were designed to connect the southern portion to the northern portion, and then also to enhance connectivity to the trail system. Got a presentation to go through today. As soon as it pulls up, I'll pivot to that. But, we're, today, we're talking about four of the projects that were recommended from that master plan, two of them on Harrison, one on Barna, and one on Delion. So, the two of them, yep, this is a continuation. There's two of them on Harrison. The one on Barna is, is, is what I'll start with, and then I'll end with a multi-use path on Delion. So, on Barna, our limits are from Jamaica to Park Avenue. This is two and a half miles, actually 2.6. And the goal was to figure out if we could remove the two-way left turn lane to make the road wide enough to then replace those with bike lanes. So, this does not include widening. It's just use the existing space. Does it make sense to remove those turn lanes to add bike lanes? Now, want to ride your bike, you don't, probably don't care about the traffic, and you'll say, yes, absolutely, it makes sense. But we wanted to make sure that we perform some due diligence and see what would happen to vehicles. Our criteria was travel time, right? How much does it time, how much time does it take to get from A to B, and also capacity at the intersections? The, the lane widths that we ended up with would be between 10 and a half and 11 feet with a bike lane width that would vary from four and a half to seven feet. Again, if we were, were to start over, we could go with the same typical section throughout, but we're not starting over. We're just staying between, within that existing pavement, again, to keep costs down. So, this could be implemented with a typical resurfacing that would have to happen anyways. All right, a lot of numbers here. What I want to point out, if you're familiar with this, with this road, the northbound queue, right, the, the, that backup at Knox McRae extends back pretty far. So, when we were out doing a site visit, that was the number one concern up and down this corridor of, all right, if it works here, it's going to work everywhere else. And so, on the left is your before, and on the right is your after. That kind of second row is Barna and Knox McRae. An important number there is that .96 that goes to .97. So, that means it goes from bad to a little bit worse. All right, as long as that number is underneath 1.0, we're okay. .96, that's, that's what you're going to get no matter what. .97 is the difference if you do convert that left turn lane if you, to bike lanes. Now, the reason it doesn't get tremendously worse or go over that 1.0 VC ratio is because there's already some opportunity for people to, to turn using gaps, right? So, it's not, you don't have continuous flow coming from, from the north, so there is an opportunity for people to turn. So, you end up with, with a little bit different distribution of when they turn, but overall through this, I was satisfied that while things will get a little bit worse for that northbound movement, I still feel very comfortable making the recommendation to move forward with this. So, more delay, but still acceptable performance. Significant benefit, benefits for the, for bicyclists, and the impacts are not problematic. Now, that's my professional opinion that they're not problematic. I would anticipate that you'll get some people who would disagree and would think that, you know, that extra delay is, is, it's ruining their life. I'm sure you'll, you'll get people saying certain things like that, but again, all I can give you is a professional opinion that it's, it's not problematic from a level of service or, or volume to capacity ratio perspective. The queue is going to increase, so there's going to be more cars waiting, but again, that's something that I think we can live with. So, I am recommending to remove that turn lane to have the bike lanes, and I think you should do it during a resurfacing. You could do it separate from a resurfacing, but the road has to get resurfaced anyways, and just when you put down the, the, the paint, the thermoplastic, instead of adding a, that two-way left turn lane, put it down as bike lanes. Just roll into the next one unless you want to talk about them one at a time. All right. So, Harrison Street, we've got, I mentioned there's two of them. It totals around two miles. This first one is about three quarters of a mile. This one, we're looking at reconstruction, okay? The road is not wide enough to do anything with it as it is. Those lanes are, are not, not up to current standards. You've got some short curve lengths, which means it's a tight curve that's a little bit uncomfortable, and if you were to design this road to today's standards, you have to spread that out a little bit, just for safety. There's some utility poles that are pretty close to the road, as well as some drainage concerns and some problems with the existing sidewalk. Again, I mentioned the pavement was cracking. So, all these things should prepare you for a price tag, right? If there's all these things that need to be fixed, then it's going to be fairly hefty of, of an improvement. Here, what we're looking at doing is having 11-foot wide travel lanes and a seven-foot wide buffered bike lane. That's what meets current standards, and if you were to build in this road as a new facility, this is generally how you would build it. Now, we did coordinate with the Public Works Director, and we made these curves longer, but not as long as they would be if we were not going to pay attention to total costs and didn't care about impacting properties. So, so they're definitely safer, smoother curves, but we didn't go to the full extent that we would. Now, we think this is a good balance, right? So, it's not, again, it's not up to current standards, but it's, it's certainly a vast improvement over what's out there today. And to get it to current standards would drive the price tag exorbitantly high. One area I'd like to point out, we're including some, some pedestrian crosswalk facilities here. There's some existing drainage structures there, and so this is another area where we'd recommend fixing the sidewalk in the ditch right across from Demeret, and again, continuing that typical section. Once you get to the far end, there is a two-way left turn lane, and that's where we'll transition to the next project. But ending on this one, this one ended up being about $2 million. That includes about $600,000 of that was in drainage costs, about a million was roadway, and the rest was contingencies. We've just gone through a conceptual phase at this point to really, really get fully comfortable with that cost estimate. We'd have to take it through, through design, which would be the next step. All right. So, again, continuing east, now just from Demeret to US-1, we took a look at this project similar to what we did on Barna, where there's an existing two-way left turn lane, and we just had to check to see if there's capacity at the intersections that would allow us to make the recommendation to remove that turn lane in order to add bike lanes on each side. Again, our criteria is travel time, capacity at intersections. Our lane widths vary. Some spaces, it's as narrow as 26 feet, sometimes it's 32, 34. It really does vary, but in general, the turn lane, or I'm sorry, the travel lane widths that we're recommending are 11 feet wide, and the bike lanes vary between four and a half feet and 11 feet, I'm sorry, and seven feet, four and a half to seven. Seven's what you want, four is the minimum. So, as long as you're between four and seven, it's okay to have a bike lane, and for cyclist travel, again, you, you want to get it about as wide as you can, but not at the expense, we're not going to make the, the travel lanes too narrow. There is one short sec, there's one section that's about 800 feet between Gettysburg and Hamilton, that's right near the railroad tracks. There's not enough space to, to have bike lanes on both sides of the road for that section. So, we're recommending a, a four-foot wide bike lane, and an 11-foot wide travel lane, and in the other direction, cyclists could share the road with vehicles, with that, that symbol there is off, off, the shared lane marking, also known as a shero. Again, for 800 feet, without, without reconstructing the road, we think this is the best that, that we can get, and we're comfortable with, with the safe operations at that location, generally due to the low speeds along Harrison, relatively low speeds along Harrison. Just another look at it. It's, it's pretty tight, but again, that's, that's about the best we think we could do right there. When it comes to intersection performance, there were no locations here where we were right at that cusp of, of 1.0, but there's a few intersections where you're at about 90% capacity, and, and without the change, you're somewhere around 80, 82%. So, again, it would be more congested, but not, not significantly. And so, here, we're, we were pretty comfortable making the recommendation to, to move forward with this change. The benefits, again, the benefits are pretty substantial, and the drawbacks are not problematic. So, we're recommending removal of the left turn lane to add bike lanes. And again, this is one that could be, could be accomplished during a resurfacing project. And if I could just go back to the previous, previous one on Harrison with a $2 million, $2 million price tag, we did not offset the normal cost of milling and resurfacing, which would have, would happen through routine maintenance regardless. So, we have not gone through to find that actual delta new cost, but that would be, that would be more, I guess, if you're, if you're considering the total cost, that's something worth looking at. All right, so back to Delion. Uh, here, we're looking at a shared use path, generally a 12-foot wide trail, but we're not going to stick to 12 feet wide when there's just not enough space. So, you'll see the northern portion of this gets a little bit narrower. But certainly down near Harrison, 12 feet, you've got plenty of space for that 12-foot wide path. As far as the typical section, we're recommending 11 feet of asphalt with a half foot on each side of a concrete ribbon, and the effect of that concrete on the edge is to protect asphalt. We've all been to asphalt trails and sometimes, especially when there's trees, but the edges can start to crumble when they get a little bit older. So, if you can line them with concrete, it just provides extra, extra protection and, and allows them to, to last for a little bit longer. Uh, it's a little bit easier for maintenance. This also includes some crosswalk additions and some additional signage for those crosswalks, and the northern portion, where it's narrower, does have some shared lanes. This cost for right about a mile is approximately $500,000. So, here's what it looks like at Harrison. Got crosswalks on each side and some new sidewalk connections to make sure that you've got connectivity to this trail from Harrison Street. And then we could, and just to orient you, sorry, north is to the right. And for this section, we're recommending putting the, putting the path over the existing sidewalk, which is on the other side of that gigantic swale that's, that's there right along Delion. Pretty close to the right-of-way, not, not, not right, not so close that it becomes difficult to construct, but on the other side of the swale, near the edge of the right-of-way is where we're recommending it initially. As we move farther north, this is the, on the far left side of the page, you can see a little bit of concrete. That's over the ditch across from Country Club. There's a pretty substantial ditch that goes underneath, and so we'd recommend some thickened concrete in that area with a handrail, just to protect anybody, well, to prevent anybody from falling in there and then replacing that end wall. And then this section, I also point out that instead of staying adjacent to the road, we're recommending bending away from it so that the trail could have trees on either side. There's still a good buffer and separation from the adjacent residences, and this would allow for a nice, nice shaded portion of the trail or path. Now, when you get a little bit farther north, again, I mentioned that we're, we're running out of space, and so, again, instead of, if, and this section also has a lot of utility poles. So, to keep costs down, instead of trying to find a place where we can relocate all those utility poles and still have a path that kind of goes around them as it, as it goes, we're recommending an eight-foot wide trail that's adjacent to the road. And I think that's a, again, a good, good balance of keeping costs down, keeping the impacts to the adjacent areas down, and while still providing a nice facility. That would require replacement of the existing, there's, there's a mountable curb there right now, replacing that with your standard F-type curb, which is just the, it's the steeper, more vertical curb. It's, it's about six inches high and would protect the area a little better. Continuing north, once you get a little farther north on the, towards the north edge of this, there's not enough room to do much any of a path, and even the existing sidewalk appears to be within private right-of-way, without going through the expense of, of figuring out exactly where that right-of-way is. Even if it's on the edge, there's not enough room to do much between the right-of-way and the actual road. So, this is the area where we said, okay, I think we're going to have to stick with the sidewalks here, but we can provide some of those shared lane markings that would allow cyclists who are comfortable riding in the road to do so with a little bit of signage and a little bit more understanding from vehicles that they might do that. Now, if you have families with kids who don't want to ride in the road, they don't have to. There's still a sidewalk there, and if I lived there and was going on a bike ride with my smaller children, we would definitely be on the sidewalk. Nowadays, my kids are all larger than me, and we'd probably be in, in the road through this section. So, an important part of having a facility where sometimes it's a wider shared use path and sometimes you're on the road, is you got to have transitions for people who have different comfort levels. So, where this starts, there's going to be a crosswalk that would, and ramps that would allow cyclists who don't want to be in the road to, to stand on the sidewalk and make that transition. And that shared lane marking would just continue up to the north end of, of Demeret. And that's all I have, but I'd be happy to...
Well, thank you for the presentation. Uh, that's a lot. I, I have a couple of things that, that struck me in Slide 17, Harrison Street conclusions. Benefits are significant. What does that mean, benefits are significant?
So, by providing bike lanes to a, a long facility where right now there, there are none, that's what I was alluding to, just, just the presence of a facility for cyclists to travel in their own space. And bicycle lanes, my, my opinion is they have, they have a benefit both for cyclists and for car drivers. Some people who are real fast cyclists, they don't, they just want to be in the road, they don't want to have the separated space. They feel more comfortable riding in the road, but a lot of drivers would rather have space for the bicyclists to not be in their way. So, the bike lanes are kind of beneficial, and again, I keep using the word balance, but I think it's appropriate here.
Yeah, and balance is probably important, and, and in all candor, I certainly have had some automobile drivers that aren't as excited about bicycle paths as some of us. So, I'll leave it at that, which brings me to the next comment. Take the left turn lane out. That's concerning to me. I will, you know, and I'll tell you, just having been here a long time, and, and I don't want to come across as real negative about it, but I certainly have some questions as I drive around, and I don't see like 30 and 40 bicycles on the path. And, and so, I'm like, this looks really good, it's green and all that, but where are the bikes? That's, that's something you're, you know, a lot of people probably don't want to hear me say, but it's a concern, and I hear it. The other thing is, for example, as you go down Highway 50 and turn onto Barna, and there's a bicycle path there, that used to be a real nice way to go around the traffic and turn right onto Barna. Well, now you don't because it's a bicycle path, and it backs up a little bit. I just want to make sure we've looked over all the traffic. When we make changes, if there's a gain somewhere, there's a loss somewhere else.
Right.
And, and I will just go on record as saying that's a concern to me, especially when every time I, like today, I sat there and I didn't want to be illegal, so, because it was clear enough, I could have done it. I thought, no, don't do it, but I sat there for my three or four or five minutes, and I didn't see any bicycles. So, again, I think it's an outstanding thing. I think it's important that where our bicycle paths go, there's people riding bicycles, and I think that we have some real exciting things, you know, across to Tampa and perhaps out to the beach. I can't wait for all that. But some of the things you mentioned, I'd like to see some bicycle studies and see how many bicycles are going in that area. Uh, member Stokel?
Yep. You actually kind of touched on a couple of things that I was going to say. Just to get a clearer picture, was the scope of the study to just focus primarily on bike lanes and not really looking at traffic or safety concerns? Was it more so focused on where we can implement bike paths?
That, that's, that's generally correct. We were looking at where, how to implement bike paths on those specific roadway segments. Now, for the ones where we're removing the two-way left turn lane, we did look at vehicular operations, and that's what was in those tables, was before and after of operations for vehicles at the intersections before and after those changes.
And that's kind of, and again, the mayor kind of alluded to that. I'm off for bikes. I would like to see more bikes on there, but also with Titusville growing and a lot more cars on the roads, it does make me a little concerned if we start eliminating potentially causing more safety concerns.
And it, just to be clear, like, traffic congestion would increase. Like, I, I want to make it clear that I was, it, it would increase by a small amount. So, I'm, I'm certainly not saying like, it's not going to get worse.
Right, right, no.
It's, traffic will get worse. It will get a little bit worse in a way that I think is acceptable. And that line that I draw is a volume to capacity ratio of 1.0 or less, and, and from our analysis, everything stayed within that, within that level. That's what, that's what made me comfortable.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, I think traffic is getting worse as it is with our growth, and then when you couple on something else. And then, this might be more of a question for staff, are we going to like revisit as Are we going to like revisit as these projects come up?
None of these are funded.
Okay, okay.
So what we'll probably do is, you know, at the budget, you get the long list of projects and how much they cost, and you get your unfunded list, is we'll add these. We'll, we'll look at all the considerations you had, the resurfacing, and we'll, we'll put together, okay, here's this project priority, and, and you guys can decide whether you want to fund them or not. And if you have questions, we can look at the, the things you brought up and make sure we have those answers around budget time.
Okay. It's definitely exciting because I do wanna, I want to see more people out. I want to see us kind of have more of that quality of life. Just want to make sure we're, we're doing it safely. Thank you.
And again, I want to, you know, make it clear that it, it could be exciting, but I need to see more bikes on the road and then those bike paths before I get too excited. Because again, even the example I used today, the fact that I couldn't go into that lane that used to be able to turn right down Barna On, the, the backup got longer and longer because a lot of people would have just been going over here and turning. Instead, we got an empty bike path to our right. And I'm not saying it's empty all the time, but I can't say, you know, take somebody down the street and say, boy, you gotta see all the bikes on this path. So that's, that's just me right now. I look forward to looking forward into it and more into it at this point, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be negative, but when you start talking about taking something away, hey, we as Americans, we want to get from A to B as quickly as possible. And now you're talking about removing something. And you were pretty honest, you were saying that, you know, I don't care if you do say point one, people know that they can't get, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, I like to get to Lowe's as quickly as possible, and I can't do it. You know, the traffic is getting a lot worse for sure. We, we want to be a multimodal city for sure, but everything that you talked about is very expensive. And we have to look at, you know, what's the cost trade-off? Is, is it a benefit to us to do something that grandioses or a limited number of people? I think we all ride bicycles, but I don't see anything wrong with the sidewalk. And I would tell you, on Harrison Street, sidewalk is pretty big. It is wider than some of the other sidewalks that, that we have here. So I think it's a good study for sure, but I think I'm with the mayor and Councilman Stokoe, we definitely need to look at this. And there is definitely some concerns too, for sure. But I appreciate the.
Very well done. Very well done. And, and open it on us, I appreciate that. Anybody else? City manager, no? Okay, thank you very much. City manager.
Sir, just noting the time right now, and we still have three presentations to go. Staff requests that we table item F, which is the Gateway Landscaping Project entry signage concepts to your next presentation meeting, which will be at the end of February.
You're going, you want to table F and what?
Item F, yes, sir, that's it. I think we can get the other two.
Okay, all right.
Move for tabling F.
I have a move from the Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
opposed? Tabled?
Back to item D, which is solid waste tax billing update. Staff was given the advisability to take a look at removing the solid waste and recycling for residential off of the water bill and creating it and putting it onto the tax roll. Sandy's here to let you know where we're at with this project and to seek any guidance that you want, would like to provide.
Thank you.
Well, my whole introduction. So it's been getting the presentation up. Like you said, a year ago, we came due for advisability, so we've been looking at it. Some of the considerations, if you move the, to the, to the tax roll, is the owner would have to pay the, for solid waste services and it would not be. If, as a new home comes in the middle of the year, the city would need to bill that property owner for a partial year, so this would result in us needing additional staffing, sorry, needing additional staffing within solid waste in order to handle those extra billings, because the non-armed tax comes once a year. The, what happens to when the ownership of the existing home changes during that year? Well, the solid waste has already been paid for by that previous owner. So you'd are, you know, you'd come in to a house and all that solid waste is paid for, but that owner paid for service they're, they're not getting because they've already left. We would no longer be able to collect cart deposits. So we would know, we would take part of it off of the utility billing, but customer services would still need to handle our commercial side. So that differs in how stormwater, we were able to take all of customer service out of it, and that was, that ended up being cost effective. This way, this, since we can't take all of customer service off, it actually ends up costing solid waste department more, more funds. We estimate about 122,000 more per year to do this. Also, a special assessment versus a user fee. So there are two requirements exist to impose a valid special assessment. The property assessment must derive a special benefit from the improvement or service provided, and the assessment must be fairly and reasonably apportioned among the properties that receive the special benefit. A user fees, they are imposed to recoup the cost of providing a service or facility to the public. Our current billing method is a, is considered using user fee and is not a special assessment. So if we were to transfer to the tax roll, we would have to change our, our entire current billing method for solid waste. So our recommendation is to stay with our current billing system for now. If we want to look at this in the future, we can, but that would, that would include a, a whole new billing methodology for solid waste. And that's it?
Member Robinson.
Yes, I totally understand what you said, but again, that when I go to Walmart, that is one of the things that I get hit up with most is the water bill, as you probably know. So the only thing that, that, at this point, can we re-educate the, the community?
Absolutely. Well, you, you met Maureen Phillips earlier in the evening for the Water Resources Department. We can put together a presentation. We can include it in all of our social media platforms as well as the next title talking
Member Nelson.
And I agree with Member Robinson. I think this is not a good idea, but I do like the education part.
Okay, I don't see anybody else, and I would, I would disagree. I think it's a good idea, it's certainly something to look at, but I don't think it's very good if it happens and nobody knows what's going on. So, and I know you do too. So I appreciate that very much. Any other questions from council? I see none. Thank you for all of your presentations. Thank you.
Onto item E, which is Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission Representative, Mr. Tom Reinhardt from FWC, South Regional Director, will provide staff, correction, council and update on the measures that are being taken to help improve the manatee survival rates.
Well, thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I appreciate your interest in what's going on. And as, as you mentioned, I, I'm the Regional Director for FWC and I'm South Region, which is St. Lucie County, through Monroe, Kachobi Glades, Hendry and Collier. But I also have a, a long background in our manatee program prior to becoming Regional Director, so I've been tasked with becoming a, a part of this incident command structure that we have, this unified command that we have with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Now, explain a little bit about that and, in a moment. As, as you're probably aware, we had a large number of manatee deaths in the last year. Starting in December of 2020, FWC noted an increase in manatee mortality in primarily Indian River Lagoon, but along the East Coast. And in, I think, March of last year, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service did declare it a unusual mortality event. That's a special designation which can free up some federal resources. And it was largely due to starvation, which is loss of seagrass in the Indian River Lagoon. And manatees come down for the winter and we have large numbers, 2,000, 2,500, that gather for warmth at the FPL Cannaveral Plant. And there just was no food anywhere for them to find. And so they had to basically make a choice of, do I stay here and stay warm but starve, or do I go out and find food? And when water temperatures are below about 68 degrees Fahrenheit, manatees can suffer from cold stress and it ultimately can kill them. And it does every year. We lose manatees every year due to cold stress, but last year was exceptional. So a combination of things, early onset of cold weather, a little bit longer than normal, and the lack of food resources nearby really caused a problem for manatees. So looking forward, obviously, we're, as you heard earlier, we're not going to solve the water quality issue and, and, and the seagrass, primarily the loss of seagrasses, you know, in short order. So we anticipate a higher level of deaths again this winter. So the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Fish and Wildlife Commission formed a joint command, a unified command, and that's an incident command structure. And I'm sure, if you haven't heard of that, it's just a method of, of organizing government agencies together for a unified command to marshal resources in a way that is, is most efficient and beneficial to whatever the situation is. It's often used in emergency situations like forest fire wildfires, hurricane, response to hurricanes and things. And so we're very grateful to our federal partners, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So we're also grateful to FPNL, who has provided us some space at their cannaveral plant for our, what we're calling our temporary field response station. It includes enhanced capabilities for carcass recovery for manatee rescue. And another component is actually, we're going to try and feed manatees in that area this winter. So we have a temporary, it's a pilot project, because we're just trying to figure that we've, it's never been attempted. Feeding manatees in the wild has never been attempted. And by and large, feeding wildlife under a situation like this rarely works and is often not successful and often leads to negative results, unintended consequences. So it's, it's rare that things like this are attempted. You know, feeding birds in your backyard is one thing, but feeding wild animals is generally not what we recommend. And so, and there are laws against it. Feeding manatees is illegal and remains so to this day for good reason. But under the guidance of our veterinarians at the many ocean area that we have around the state and with concurrence from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, we have embarked upon this pilot program of feeding manatees. So we have set up an area near their warm water discharge in order to provide some produce, and we are procuring that direct from growers. And so as of Thursday, and if, when we first started this, the waters were warm and not very many, many manatees were gathering. So we've been actually very lucky that winter has taken its time to get here and it's been warmer. So manatees have been, been able to stay spread out, find natural food resources on their own, but now they're starting to gather in larger numbers. And as of Thursday, they actually did start feeding in some of our, in our corral where we have some feeding squares and other things that we are doing, trying to tempt them to come in. I was just there before I came to this meeting, and we, I think, had up to 400 manatees there today and several feedings. And, and they are now eating quite a bit of lettuce, cabbage, romaine and butter leaf lettuce. So we feel that's successful, but I also want to temper that with, there's no possible way to feed all the manatees in the Indian River Lagoon or along the East Coast. Some will still starve to death and die, but we're hoping that this pilot program will be a way to stave off some of that and, and provide some of those animals, some of the sustenance, sustenance that they need to make it. And we've enhanced our monitoring of other warm water sites. We're looking actively for any animals that are in need of rescue. We've got a great partnership with all the ocean area, the Jacksonville Zoo, SeaWorld, Zoo Tampa, and even the Columbus Zoo. DHL actually sponsored and paid for a flight to take four manatees that were past a critical care stage and just needed some time in-house to go up to the Columbus Zoo, which is one of our partners in the manatee rehabilitation partnerships, or we're grateful to, for that partnership. It's about a $70,000 donation to fly more manatees to Columbus. And then the Columbus Zoo is taking on their care. I think they have nine manatees there, which is way more than they usually have. And so, and SeaWorld is actually adding multiple pools now to add to the increased number of manatees that are being rescued. So hopefully those pools will be online into February, March. And so that's kind of a big picture of, of where we are and everything that we're doing. I will say that we have a weekly update. We usually update our webpage on, on Wednesday. So if, if people are interested, you go to myfwc.com, you can search manatee UME, unusual mortality event, and we've got a whole page dedicated to it. There's media resources on there, there's footage of the manatees actually feeding on lettuce, if you would like to see that video. There's, our Flickr page has a, a page dedicated for imagery of, of our temporary field response station, some of the things that we're doing. Our mortality statistics are updated weekly, so being very open and transparent, all of that's available on the web. And I'll also put a plug in for our manatee alert, or Wildlife Alert Hotline, 888-404-3922 or FWCC. That's for citizens to report, any manatees that they see are in distress or if they find a deceased manatee. And we're working very hard to recover those carcasses, do an examination. Some get a full necropsy, not all do, there's no possible way we could fully necropsy everyone. But where we see some fresher carcasses where we can gather data, we're, we're using necropsy to understand cause of death in many cases. Manatees are still dying for other reasons. Certainly watercraft strike is still, still an issue, so we're, we're doing that. So again, our manatee statistics are updated weekly and we have a UME specific update. I provide a weekly video update of what we're doing. That's all usually updated by Wednesday afternoon for your continued interest and check that. With that, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions that you all might have.
Well, first of all, thank you for being here. I can say that this all started moving forward for us when Laura Lee came to a meeting and had some concerns and wanted us to do a letter to the governor, and we did. And then I believe City Manager had the idea for, hey, let's get in touch with State Representative, Coach P. So I did. So then I asked Coach P to set up a meeting. I don't know if you were in that meeting or not, the Zoom meeting? Okay. Well, we had a Zoom meeting and we had, you know, a, a similar presentation. Things hadn't started yet. One of the concerns I had was, they spoke very clearly, at least one individual from FWC, about the real concern of human interaction with the animals. And I certainly got that. And I wasn't trying to be smart, but it's a very distressing situation. So I kind of threw my opinion out there that they're better fed than dead. And, and I didn't really understand, quite honestly, I was a little frustrated that we're very concerned about human interaction. I get that. You hear that with dolphins and whales and everything else. But if they're not eating, there's no food, that's an emergency. So we kind of make some exceptions, and we've seen a lot of exceptions to the rule in our country, in our world in the last couple of years. So I thank you for where you're going with this. It does my heart good to hear that the lettuce drop, or whatever you want to call it, is ongoing. I have two questions. One, I got, was fortunate enough in our recent chamber meeting to hear the MRC. Can you guys tell me who their, that presenter lady is?
Dr. Souza.
What's it, tell me again?
Dr. Soto.
Very good, Dr. Soto. And she had a chart up there, a graph up there, and her main thing was, water quality is actually improving. I've got the chart here. And actually, the water quality in the Indian River Lagoon, according to her, I took a picture of it, so I didn't create it, has been going up for about the last three or four years and is as good or even better as it was back in, better look at, do this, 2000, 2003, 2004. I don't really know enough to know if that's great, because maybe it wasn't very good in 2003, 2004, but it's getting better. But what she said they don't know is as the water's getting better, the grass is not coming back. It's, why is that?
Yeah, I can't speak to that. That's, that's a question for another agency.
And truthfully, she was struggling with an answer to it. Does sound like it's, there's a lot of hypotheses out there, but no real understanding.
Really not FWC's wheelhouse. So I really can't speak to that. What I can speak to is a lack of forage out there and, and what the conditions of the manatees are, and we're doing everything we can to address that. And to, to speak to your, your concerns about feeding manatees and habituating them to people, that tends to bring them to where people are, where people are is where the boats are, and that is still a continual danger. So if you look at some of the video that we have, we're being very careful to avoid that kind of connection between food and that, you know, we don't want to set them up for another kind of mortality event.
I get it, I do. I really do. Well, well, again, though, I'm, I'm still going to say that if they're starving, we gotta feed them. And, and I appreciate you doing that. And you also noted that, you know, not going to be able to feed them all in the Indian River Lagoon, and I get that. And then you said the East Coast. So is this a problem outside the Indian River Lagoon as well?
Yeah, and, and so what kind of I think happened last year is that they were here overwintering and unfortunately starvation is a, a long-term process. As soon as the waters warmed up, they began moving, dispersing to various locations, either north or south. And so that chronic condition continued, so we were, have picking up starving manatees down in Palm Beach and in Broward. But they were probably manatees that were overwintering here and had no food. So that's why it did become almost a whole East Coast phenomenon. The epicenter of the loss of seagrass is though really is the Indian River Lagoon. But, you know, I'm, I'm not going to pretend that there aren't seagrass issues all over Florida along the East Coast. Biscayne Bay is having its own issues. Lake Worth Lagoon is doing all right. But, but this really was an epicenter, and I've seen it coming since, you know, 2011, 12. We kind of had a super bloom that lasted the whole year, and we had issues with manatees and they switched over to floating algae, the, the grass alaria, kind of that purple floating algae. And that's a subpar food for them. So this has been a, a long-term decline. And last year just was, I guess, a turning point or something where it just, everything came together. And the earlier onset of winter and a longer colder period just really set them up for.
All right, thank you. I have several, Vice Mayor.
Thanks for your presentation. A couple of questions for you. How many manatees on average do we have on the East Coast?
On the East Coast?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think our latest estimate, population estimate was from a couple of years ago, can't do that every year. And this is. And this is a statistical estimate, not just a point count, applying and looking at county manatees, was around, you know, 7,500 or 8,000 manatees, in roughly half, it's roughly 50/50, probably a few a little more on the east coast.
Okay, and I did pull out your mortality comparison chart, and on average, we're doing about 33 deaths per year for manatees?
Thirty-three?
Yeah.
No.
Five-year average.
Thirty-three for the state, or for Brevard County?
This is Brevard County.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'm not familiar with the county level specifics, so...
All right. On average, how long does it take for manatees to mature?
To become?
Mature?
Um, females, five or six years of age, when they are first, I think, able to produce a calf. Males mature earlier than that, but they're smaller and they're not very competitive. Mating in manatees is a very competitive situation, so it's usually the older males that are actually successful. But females can become reproductively active at five or six years old, maybe a bit older, I think, as mature, yeah.
And of course, an important question is, you're saying about 7,500 manatees, right? State of Florida?
State of Florida, yeah.
State of Florida. Do you foresee that if we don't do more than just feed them, but turn and take care of the Indian River and other rivers, and they become extinct?
Chance of extinction in this study actually was done over the next 100 years is very low, well below 1%. So extinction is, is probably not a likely, it's definitely not a likely outcome, in the long term, for sure. We've done a lot of modeling on population dynamics, it's taken into account events similar to this, red tides, which is an acute event primarily on the west coast, that can have a negative toll on manatees. In 2013, we lost, that year was 800 in some manatees, most of, a large number of them due to red tide. We've had cold snaps. 2010, I think you all remember 2010, it was freezing cold for two straight weeks, almost start, like literally on January 1st, two weeks, it was really cold. That was a significant dive. That year, we had 700 some manatees die, and most of them due to the cold in the first part of the year. So our modeling takes into account stochastic events like this. And it's still, even with 1,000, 1,100 manatees dying last year, chance of it is very low.
Great. You did bring another point I was thinking about then. So when you look at starvation versus other means of death, where is starvation on the scale?
Well, we would count that as natural other category. But typically, that is not, starvation itself is typically not something that you see in manatees. Last year really was the first time that we saw a large number die from starvation. Occasionally, manatees fail to thrive, so to speak, and those are usually younger manatees that just didn't figure it out. But that's usually very few. So it was, it was unique, and that's why it was declared an unusual mortality event by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and it's also Gumi, the Working Group for Unusual Marine Mammal Mortality. That's an interdisciplinary body that reviews the data, it recommend, and service will take that under consideration. They actually did declare, and opens up additional avenues of funding. Led to what we have here with the Joint Unified Command with our federal partner.
And last question is, how long do you plan to feed the manatees?
Well, we're going to very carefully monitor climatic conditions, and want them to, as soon as it's warm enough, we want them to leave and go to other places like South Florida, Lake Worth Lagoon, other places to the north, some manatees will summer, they will, Carolinas, Georgia, elsewhere. So we do want them to naturally disperse from their warm water site when the time is appropriate. So we have, we're going to do monitoring of climate models, and water temperatures, may need to wean them off the food, make sure that they, they move on to, we want them on natural forage, rather than, that's the best thing for them. This is good enough, and we'll get them through. Oh, again, this is a pilot project, it's never been tried before, so we're, I think we're learning a lot every single...
Thank you, sir.
Member Nelson?
I was told to be nice to you.
Well, I don't know who would have told you that.
Laura Lee. She said be nice to him. Tom, I do have some questions.
Yeah.
About how many deaths per day are we having right now?
I, that I can't answer, because a death per day is, is, do they die today, or did we, were they reported and discovered today? So, you know, I, I just don't know. I think that, right now, with the cooler weather moving on, we are having probably several animals die each day, or are being discovered every day. But I, you know, it's, it's hard to do that on a daily basis, and that's why we update our mortality statistics on a weekly basis, because we have to do some quality control and quality insurance of the data, make sure that carcass is not double counted, it was reported here, and then it floated somewhere else. So we do a lot of that kind of detective work, if you will, to understand it, so...
Somebody was telling me that we have about eight carcasses a day covered, burned in.
Again, I don't know the, the running daily average, so I can't, I can't speak to that right now, but I know the number is creeping up, again, because of the, the current weather conditions. And with colder weather coming this weekend, I expect numbers to, to increase a little bit.
And now that we're feeding them now, is it enough to take care of the, I think you said 2,500, 2,000 at Florida Power and Light?
Well, and that, we don't have 2,000 manatees there right now. That is, that's what can be there in any given winter. So last count, there's, there's several hundred there. I think we had 400 or so. So in the general area, there's, there's several hundreds of manatees. I don't, I don't know that there's how many are there right now, other than what we saw today. And, you know, what we're providing is going to help, but again, it's, it's, I don't know that, like, we can effectively feed all of them.
Okay.
And so, just, you have some simple math, an average adult manatee's 1,000 pounds, and they eat 10% of their body weight, or can eat 10% of their body weight per day in food, so, under pounds per manatee per day.
That's a lot of lettuce.
Yeah. So, you know, we have, we are making no illusions that we're going to be able to feed every single manatee to the full extent, but what we are hoping to do is to stave off some of those, those conditions, at least a little bit, to abate it, and hopefully get the manatees that really need it will get it.
I understand there's also a herd in Salt Lake Beach?
So that is another warm water site, that is a passive site, the Soto Canal, yeah, that does, and we are monitoring that daily, we do photo ID, we look for animals that are, appear thin or need rescue. We will selectively rescue the ones that we feel are in the most greatest need.
Let me ask you, you said this was not, not necessarily successful? Why are you saying that the, providing the manatee with lettuce is not necessarily successful?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, let me, let me say it this way. Do you think this program is successful or not? Why?
Okay, so, manatees just started eating on Thursday.
Okay.
So, this is, as I mentioned, this is a pilot program. We're, we are not sure how well this will work. We were unsure that they would actually even feed. And it's kind of funny, because last, last week, we actually, we were trying, we were doing everything we could to provide the right cues for them. We provided produce in floating squares, which is a technique used in ocean, in the ocean area. We had submerged canisters, or EVC pipe with lettuce in it, so it was on the bottom, it was in the water column, it was on the surface. And we actually had some scientists, some researchers, that were supposed to be there on Friday to play the underwater sounds of manatees eating. That's the extent that we were about to go to, because that could stimulate manatees to eat. And what happened was, some manatees did come into the feeding area, and one of them, or two of them, began chewing on some of the lettuce. And just naturally, they did what we were going to try to do with hydro, underwater hydrophones. So the sound of a few of them eating actually stimulated others to come in and begin feeding. So that may have been the, the thing that really kind of intrigued them and got them going, because we had a kind of what I would call behavioral mismatch. They come to that area to sleep and warm up, and then they leave to find food and then come back. That's their behavior. Going there to find food is, was not a natural thing. And again, that speaks to why we want to be very careful about associating people with food. So we have tarps all along the wall, so when we're feeding food, we're going through the tarp, we're not leaning over and handing them food, it comes through the tarp. You'll see that on the video that gets posted tomorrow, I think. And so, but once they started going, they really did start feeding it. So, because romaine lettuce is not a natural thing in their environment, and unless they've spent some time in rehab, they may not recognize that as food. But now that they are, it's, it seems to be working. So, right now, when we put out the, the feeding, the lettuce, we're doing it multiple times during the day, it's gone, they're, they're chowing down. So, they really are. And now we're going to explore other things that we want to do there to make sure that we get as many of the manatees fed as possible. Some of them are a little pushy and greedy, and we want to make sure that they're not outcompeting some of their kindred who are also in need. So we're exploring a variety of things to make sure that we're doing the best we can there. And we're learning every day, so, and unfortunately, this is probably something that will have to happen again next winter, and maybe the winter after that, it just depends on, on the conditions in the Indian River Lagoon.
Oh, I'm going to tell you, this is a Laura Lee question, not a Jill Lynn question. She was talking about hydrola out at Salt Lake, can that be used?
No, and we've, we've discussed this, and we've looked into it. We've been in consultation with our veterinarians. We feel that the, the produce that we're providing, that is standard fare when an animal is in rehab, is the best. Transplanting exotic invasive species from one water body to another has, has its own problems.
She wasn't suggesting, she was suggesting adding it and taking it.
Right, and those...
Which would still do potential.
Yeah, yeah. Those fragments of hydrola can then become hydrola elsewhere. And then the other part is, hydrola is like 98% water. Water is very heavy. When you harvest it, put it in a truck, try to drive it, by the time it gets here, it will be green mush, not, not very attractive and probably not very nutritious. I doubt they would eat it. It'd be, that would be very hard to do. It would just, it would just, by the weight of itself. And we are definitely not in favor of moving any exotic species around the state. We, that's actually a crime, too. But...
Only if they like to eat.
Yeah, so, what, the system we have in place, we can, we can, we've got several farmers that we're working directly with, we're getting large amounts, we've got another shipment coming tomorrow. And we're very fortunate to have the Fish and Wildlife Foundation of Florida, which is our 501(c)(3) citizen support organization, kind of handling, they're receiving donations from the public. I said this, we had a media call the other week, and I didn't intend this to be the soundbite, but it got picked up by the AP, and it went around the country. I said, you know, people really want to feed manatees, and I recommend you use your dollars and not heads of romaine. And, and what I mean by that is, dollar donations that go to the Fish and Wildlife Foundation of Florida, 100%, not, there's no administrative fees on this fund that they're holding, go to support our feeding efforts and our rescue and rehab efforts. So if people really want to help, donation to that fund for the Fish and Wildlife Foundation of Florida is the best way, because that's, and, you know, people can't just come with a bucket of lettuce to donate to us, we can't manage that. That is just, it's too small to, it's just, it'd be intractable to try to do that. So the best way, you know, it's like when the Red Cross is, is, responds to something, they say, you know, don't send us a box of shirts and diapers, send us some cash, we'll take care of that. That's the same kind of principle here. So I really appreciate everyone's enthusiasm and wanting to help, that really is the best way that people can...
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I see no other questions from council. I personally want to thank you, listening to you, it's, that's a tough one. It's, it's a heartbreaker.
Absolutely. You know, I mean, all, all of our staff, they're in this business, not to get rich and famous, because that doesn't happen when you get a biology degree, you know?
Yeah.
They're in it because they really do love the work and love the animals. So it is heartbreaking for our staff, too, to have to deal with this kind of debt. But we hope we're doing the right thing here, and we're seeing positive results.
Well, thank you, and I don't know if we do this for presenters all the time, but I'm going to... Thank you. City Manager?
As a reminder, council, 4F has been tabled, we're on to 4G, which is letters of appreciation from Fire and Rescue Services, Kyle George, Dana Hershey, Jordan Harris, Justin Kenny, Menemie Ventura, Eddie Galindo from the Development Department, and Matt Hickson from the Water Resources Department. And you're on to petitions and requests.
And just a reminder, because I know we had a lot of people walk in, and I used to do that before I got on council, and I didn't realize that I was still in the first meeting. So for those of you who are looking for something in the second meeting, we are still on the first meeting and getting ready to finish it with petitions and requests, for those who have been here to see what had gone on there. So with that, petitions or requests, basically just come up on your own. There we go. Hello, Ms. Kenny?
Hello, yes, my name is Casey, Orange, Maryland Avenue, Titusville. For the website, Basin, the 2013 Basin Management Action Plan represents a long-term plan to restore deeper water seagrass habitats in the Indian River Lagoon Basin through the reduction of watershed loading of nitrogen and phosphorus. Regardless of the efforts undertaken, 95% of seagrasses have been wiped out in the North Indian River Lagoon due to pollution, resulting in the death of over 1,075 manatees in 2021. More can and must be done, the Marine Resource Council indicates the answer to Dan Diesel's question is that the Indian River Lagoon must be monitored more comprehensively to include herbicides, pesticides, algae, toxins, and bacteria. Major stormwater discharge points into the Indian River Lagoon, where our stormwater flows into the lagoon, should be regularly tested for nutrients. LID strategies must be implemented not only in new developments, but in older developments. I met a gentleman at the Marine Resource Council LID conference, and he gave me his business card. Chris Bogdan of Ferguson Waterworks presented several products at the Marine Resource LID Conference that could be utilized in older developments. I did some research into his products, and they include herb curb inlet baskets that filter stormwater as it runs into the curb inlet. So to be clear, as the water runs along the curbing in front of the, between the street and the right of ways, it goes into an inlet, a curb inlet. At that point, a basket can be installed that collects the debris, and the nutrients can be, and the debris can later be removed, somewhat like a mini baffle box. Well, Chris sells those, and I think Mayor Diesel remembers that presentation.
I do.
I suggest that Sandra Reller of Public Works, or Kevin Cook, could meet with Chris Bogdan. I have his business card of Ferguson Waterworks to determine if any of their products could be utilized by the city to reduce stormwater discharge into the lagoon from the older developments. All efforts must be undertaken and considered. Thank you.
Real quick, you can stop the clock, but this will just take a second. You talked about the chemicals and the going in there. Will that affect the water quality status? And the reason I'm saying that is, is I look at this chart, and it shows water quality getting better, which I'm surprised to see. Does that not register on there? Is that a non-factor in the water quality, can be getting better, but in reality, it's not?
When you said that, I looked at this Marine Resource Council, their report card, and she, she talked in here, this is her, Lisa Soto's writing, and she says in here, however, seagrasses are now drastically declining, even though it does appear that the water is improving. And what does it mean? It means the Indian River Lagoon Water Quality Monitoring Program is not comprehensive enough to explain what is killing the seagrass. State monitoring programs must be expanded to monitor to include toxins like herbicides, pesticides, algae toxins, and bacteria indicative of wastewater. Please urge your state and local representatives to make this happen. So I am following her direction. So I am following her direction.
I want you to know, it looks like we just had this planned out. I asked a question, you've got the book, we're good to go.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Next petition or request, you can reset the clock. Thank you.
Coach Diesel, thank you.
Hey, brother.
Thank you for bringing FWC here. I would suggest that we do like some council meetings we used to do, and that would be to have, allow public speaking for presentations, because we have had numerous presentations where the people leave and they don't get an opportunity to hear what the public has to say, which may even be sometimes more intelligent than what's presented from the council and questions and so forth. So I appreciate what was just said, and I would like sometimes to do like we used to do. And I brought this sign. And this is a sign that I held up on January the 9th. January 9th is that, it was interesting, happened on January 9th. I was in a demonstration for a number of things there, and it included this sign. Sewage pollution on January the 9th. My golly, we had sewage going into the river. And on January the 12th, we had a mission by John Stauffer that, that later in December, we had sewage flowing into the river, and he was saving the intersection from being flooded at Garden Street and US 1. Well, interestingly, is that later on in the year, we have a consent agenda from FDEP. It says, we stopped polluting the river, discharge of the river on December the 19th. It was completely different than what John Stauffer said, completely different than what everybody saw on December the, no, this is January the 9th, with the parade. So it wasn't true at all. So the consent order was false. Fact is, is that I, I'm Stan Johnston, I saw sewage going in the river February the 18th, and that's when the city constructed a burn to stop it going into the river, which we've got photos of, which we have witnesses of, including the police department and so forth. So it was, it was false, and I want FWC to know, understand is that the city of Titusville is not being upfront, because we're not telling the truth. We had sewage discharge much longer after December the 19th. I mean, we saw it going February 18th, and even, even later, people were talking about even in April, dumping what was left in the ponds. I pumped, pumping the ponds that had sewage in them, pumping it into the river over a burn. So, and that, so that was sort of coinciding with the manatee deaths. We're talking about December through April. So...
Thank you, sir.
I'll ask for another minute, but I probably won't get it.
No, I don't see it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, petitions or requests? Come on up.
Kathleen Perez, 325 South Washington Avenue, Titusville. Kay kind of stole my thunder on the first point I was going to make.
She knows that.
But, so I'm going to just say it the way I was thinking about it in a logical sense. If you, if you have some chart that say that says the river quality is actually getting better, but no grass is regrowing, logically, it means you can't fix what you broke as easily as you thought, correct?
I don't know.
That seems like the logical conclusion to me. It's a more complicated thing.
It's not getting fixed.
And, yeah, we break things and then we can't fix them because we didn't understand them. My second question was about, and I also spoke with Laura Lee and some other people, and I did a little research. So, the gentleman from FWC, I don't remember his name, but he was saying, oh, you know, we can't use hydrilla. The research I've looked at says the hydrilla and also the water hyacinth are far more nutritious for the manatees than the cabbage, or, no, sorry, lettuce, which is not something they normally eat. They do love to eat hydrilla and water hyacinth. So, this sounds corny, but we had a farm business for 10 years in Maryland. We had alpacas, horses, and goats. And I know from being a farmer, goats will only eat grass if they're starved to it. That's how the farmers say, they have to be starved to it to eat grass. They don't like it, and it doesn't sustain them. So the only time they'll eat it is if they can't have bull thistle, poison ivy, multiflora, tree bark. That's the kind of stuff they love to eat. Woody, thorny, scary stuff. They have to be starved to grass because they know, they're smart enough to know themselves, that's not going to work for me, it's not going to sustain me. They'll eat it if they have no other choice. It seems to me, and I'm not a scientist, that we're paying FWC to spray poison onto the hydrilla and the water hyacinth. We did it Fox Lake recently, and all that sunk to the bottom and created more muck there where it doesn't belong. And I know it's cheaper to poison everything, it's not safer, though, for the environment. We still have South Lake, which has all that in it, and it could be mechanically harvested, and it would cost a little more, but it would save a lot more manatees at the same time, and it would also be going in the right direction. We're not poisoning things just because it's cheaper. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I learned a little bit about goats today, too. And, there he is, come on up. There he is. I just liked that one more thing I wasn't going to speak, but the fact of the matter is, is that all these herbicides and pesticides and toxins are retained by manatees. Okay, so that's good, that could be adding a lot to this picture, okay, of deaths. Want to comment on that, but just, I throw that out. Thank you. Well, we're going to try to hold, you get them all up there before we start the clock. We're going to try to be fair to everybody and hold this to three minutes. Wait, don't start the clock till the posters, those are prettier posters, as far as color. That's not pretty over there. No, it's not. But they're...
It's not.
All right, when you're ready.
Do I need to state my name and address?
Yes, ready? Go ahead.
Katrina Shaddix, 3287 County Road, 426 Geneva, Florida. And thank you, FWC, for the presentation. A lot of us don't know, the FWC is tasked with cleaning up the wildlife carnage resulting from failed policies, sprawl development, and bad growth management decisions made at the local levels of government. They actually had the experimental feeding program ready to go in August, but their hands were tied by decision makers. So this could have been a lot more successful, a lot more quicker, if it didn't have a bunch of red tape to go through. But as you look at the pictures of these dead manatees, these are the phases of progress. These are the phases of overdevelopment. These are the phases of bad growth decisions made by city and county commissioners. These are the phases of clean water regulation rollbacks. This is, these are the phases of too many septic tanks. These are the phases of failing water treatment infrastructure. These are the phases of lawn fertilizer runoff. These are the phases of aquatic herbicide spraying. These are the phases of clearcutting our forest, and these are the phases of the seagrass mitigation bill, which we hope doesn't pass. And now this has become Florida. This is Florida. This is what we are known worldwide for now. As a third-generation native Floridian who has relaxed, recharged, and recreated on Play Linda Beach since I was two, which was back in the early 70s, when there was actually a little snack bar at Play Linda, I never thought I'd see the day when we'd be starving manatees to death and dumping their emaciated bodies at the landfill like garbage, after polluting their water so badly with human sewage that an entire ecosystem collapsed, killing off all of the seagrass, which is the manatee's main food source in the Indian River Lagoon. Now, on behalf of manatees and my nonprofit org, Bear Warriors United, I have filed a lawsuit against the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for permitting the septic tanks for sprawl development, but there are three things that this council can do to stop the starve of our beloved manatees. Number one would be to contact Governor DeSantis and ask him to declare a state of emergency for the Indian River Lagoon and the manatees. Number two would be to issue a citywide moratorium to stop the spraying of deadly herbicides into our water bodies, which would reduce the chemical loading into the lagoon. And there's currently a spray moratorium for the Blue Springs region to help the manatees survive by not poisoning their natural food sources like hydrilla and hyacinths. Also, I didn't know, a gentleman brought it up a few minutes ago, but that the majority of manatees tested have glyphosate in their blood, and glyphosate is a deadly chemical used in herbicide and weak killers like Roundup. The third thing y'all can do is issue a moratorium of developments with septic tanks. This was done before in Brevard County, I think by Commissioner Barfield, and it would be a tremendous help to bring the lagoon ecosystem back to life and reduce the starvation deaths of our manatees. Thank you.
Without responding to much of that, I will simply say, I will simply say, and I think you're aware, we sent a letter to the governor already, asking pretty much what you did. And I don't have all the stats and facts, I'd need staff to get on that, but it's a big deal to us. Part of our program is to get rid of the septic tanks anywhere near the lagoon. So there, we are removing, and there's, and you could go into the ears if you want, but we're ahead of the curve on getting rid of septic tanks. That's a big deal. The septic tanks, I understand, and I'm not the expert, but that's a big deal. So thank you very much. Come on up. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Wanda Jones. I am a marine mammal biologist. I conducted my graduate research on manatee feeding preferences, and so I'd like to address some of the information that the public has been receiving. First of all, manatees being fed lettuce, it's not a surprise to me that they are not eating it as a group, because it is not a natural food for them. They don't encounter lettuce in the wild, therefore they don't recognize it as food. That's why they're not eating it. In my study, lettuce was the least preferred food, and it also was the least nutritious food. The top foods that the manatees preferred were hydrilla and water hyacinth, Southern Iad and Vallesneri also. But hydrilla has, and water hyacinth, according to a study done by Dr. Worthy, looking at digestive efficiencies, freshwater plants such as hydrilla and water hyacinth actually have the fiber content that manatees need. They're herbivores, and they need the fiber. Seagrass and manatees have evolved, co-evolved for millions of years, and so seagrass has a fibrous content that manatees depend on. Freshwater plants such as hydrill and water hyacinth do also. Lettuce has nothing but water. I know Dr. Ryan Art mentioned that hydrilla is mostly 98% water. Thing is, is that so is romaine lettuce, and romaine lettuce has no nutrients or fiber. Hydrilla is fibrous and provides manatee guts, their digestive system with the fiber that they need in order to process everything properly and to remain healthy. Evidence, if you need it, is look at Crystal River manatees. They eat hydrilla left and right. It's one of their favorite foods. St. John's River water, St. John's River manatees eat water hyacinth all the time. And so the manatees themselves are telling us what they eat. Wild manatees, people say, well, they eat it in captivity. Yes, that's true. But that's because wild manatees, and this is something that the experts, the rehab experts told FWC when they were consulting with them on this, when you bring wild manatees into a rehab facility, they don't start eating lettuce, because, again, they don't recognize it as food. They are placed with other manatees that have already been there, that have already started eating lettuce, in order to show them that, yes, this is something that you can eat. That's how you get wild manatees to start eating lettuce. I, I am speculating, since I haven't been told, but I speculate that's what the FWC is trying to do over here. They're putting lettuce out in the hopes that some of the manatees, if you all know anything about your manatees here, a number of them were rehabbed manatees, and the way you can tell are they're the ones with the satellite tags on their tails. If you happen to see a manatee and you see this little thing bobbing along behind it, it's satellite-tagged manatee. Those manatees, because they were rehabbed, ate lettuce in captivity. I speculate that the FWC is hoping that those few manatees, because there aren't that, can I, those few manatees, there aren't that many, will eat the lettuce because they remember, this is what I used to eat, and they're hoping that the rest of the manatees will do that also. The problem is, in captivity, you have maybe two manatees eating lettuce and one that just got brought in that needs to learn. Here, you're talking about maybe 10 manatees at the most that say, oh, this is something I can eat, but you've got 400 others that are like, oh, I don't recognize it, and just because there's 10 eating it doesn't mean these others will. So that is one of the huge problems with feeding them lettuce. In regards to feeding them hydrilla and water...
Hold up, now we need to stop, because now you're going in regards to. Can you finish this up and...
I was going to.
30 seconds?
Yes, I can finish it in 30 seconds.
Go 30 seconds.
Hydrilla does not turn to mush when you harvest it. I used to collect it for my study, and sometimes it would sit in the container that I brought it in for two days, because I couldn't get there, so it will not turn to mush. And you have an area that is less than 15 minutes away from IRL. There is no way hydrilla will turn to mush. If you harvest it from South Lake and bring it over to IRL, it'll still be very fresh. Water hyacinth stays fresh for several days. Particles will not grow in the IRL because the IRL is brackish. Hydrilla is freshwater. It can't grow here, and the manatees will eat it all. There won't be any particles left to grow, and even if there were, again, it's too brackish for it to grow. Macroinvertebrates, he didn't mention, but that's another thing they're concerned about, these little itty-bitty animals that live within the water hyacinth, they're afraid that they will grow in the lagoon. They will not grow because, one, they'll get eaten by the manatees when they eat the food. Two, it's brackish. Those animals are freshwater. They can't live in brackish water. Three, the IRL is so polluted, nothing can live in it. You don't even have crabs or shrimp living here, so nothing will live here. It's illegal to transport. FW, DEP, which is the sister agency to FWC, can give FWC the permit to transport them here. I got a permit from DEP in order to do my transporting of the things. Okay.
Thank you. That was actually extra. Let me just ask one real quick question, and not trying to start a real thing here, but is there any place where there's this communication between all of the stakeholders, your expertise and this board, the MRC and FWC? Is there such a thing? Is there a communication going on?
I have been told that the people who are making decisions are a group of decision-makers from rehab facility people, FWC biologists, other manatee biologists, who are the ones who have been making the decision. What I believe, what I suspect, I speculate, may be happening, because I have had the opportunity to talk with one of the manatee biologists, and I've asked to be a part, but haven't been included, but what I suspect is that the FWC biologist, as he said, are probably crying themselves to sleep at night because they're losing these animals, but it's people who are higher up that make the decisions. If it was up to the FWC biologist, I'm pretty sure the manatees would be eating a food they'll actually eat, hydrill and water hyacinth by now.
That's interesting. Thank you.
And can I point out one thing?
Go ahead, go ahead.
The people at Salt Lake would be tickled to death to see all that plant life going to the manatees instead of...
And that's probably why I'm asking, is there any talking going on? I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Dr. Jeff Greenberg. I just moved here last in March. I've got 43 years' experience as an environmental scientist, geological educator, and outreach and consultant on a lot of things, including wastewater and sanitation. I worked previously with the Wisconsin Geological Survey as a state geologist. I'm vice president of an organization known as Geologists in the Public Interest. I'm working here with KBB North, helping to clean up roadside with the former mayor, working with the Brevard Sustainability Group, and I'm very, very delighted to have a brand-new family back in Florida again, where I grew up, south of Miami, a long, long time ago. Anyway, I want to offer a really big issue, a general issue, just very, very briefly, dealing with stormwater. Stormwater retention and drainage is not simply a plumbing issue. Now, I can say this from my own backyard. I moved into West Heritage, if you know where that is, and we have one of the drainage ditches in our backyard. That drainage ditch has been rather brutalized lately by Public Works in Titusville. I don't want to make it sound as though there's any bad intentions there, but I think they're just not understanding the importance of ecological habitat that that drainage ditch represents. Even since I've been there in March, I'm just dazzled by the number of species, wonderful things, including a couple of protected turtles and other things else that live there. Now, in order to keep it in line or do whatever they're thinking about for drainage, they've chopped down vegetation, they've dredged the bottom. I hope to have an opportunity to talk to them a little bit about consultation on how to do this much better, because I think there is a way that we can work on preserving the ecology without losing the possibility of facility of this for wastewater. And this is right in my backyard, and it, it's sad. It's a... the ecology without losing the possibility of, of facility of this for wastewater. Uh, this is right in my backyard and it, uh, it's sad. It's, it's a sad deal. I've got pictures before and after. And I think it'll probably take at least a year for that ditch to recover its ecological significance. People who are not from this area don't realize how wonderful the wildlife here happens to be. Everything from the mammals all the way down through the invertebrates. And again, we've got so many birds and so many turtles and snakes and things that live in something as humble as that ditch. Not all of our Titusville ditches are in that great a shape. Uh, our ditch happened to be, but right now, because I think of the maintenance that's been done on it, it's really been damaged badly. And as a scientist, again, I'd be willing to consult, to help, to do all I can, including volunteer, even adopting our ditch to make sure that it's cleaned out, that I can keep, uh, refuse out of there too and work on some vegetation without the heavy-handed lawnmowers, big lawnmowers, big nasty lawnmowers that have cut down vegetation right down to the soil and allowing all the banks to erode right back into it too.
I'd, um, I would imagine that some of our staff would do well to, you know, have a meeting with you and hear what you have to say at more, greater length, because first of all, what comes across to me clearly is your passion.
Yeah.
And, you know, uh, it's, it's what you wanna, you want to get it right. And, uh, and so do we. Let me make that clear to staff, so do we. But at the same time, maybe there's something you can add and you've got, certainly have a lot of experience and like I said, a passion that's nice to see.
I'd love to work with them. I really would. I want, I want to make it cooperative without any, uh, you know, heavy-handed authoritarian kind of thing, but I don't have it anyway.
No, absolutely. Well, again, it never hurts to sit down and talk.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Petitions or requests for this meeting? It's gonna go quick. I'm gonna do once, twice. Uh, I see nothing from council. Got a phone hammer, it's been a while. Uh, with that, this meeting will adjourn and I am going to say we're gonna start at 35. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.